Welcome, everyone, to the Guam Congress Building. This is the Committee on Land. This is the Committee on Land, Culture and Justice, now called to order. Today's Thursday, August 29, 2024, and the time is about 5:35 PM. In compliance with the open government law, notice for this public hearing was published in the Guam Daily Post and posted to the Government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Thursday, August 22 and Tuesday, August 27. And notice was also delivered via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets, and this hearing is being livestreamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. I'm Speaker Teresa Lahy, the chairperson of the Committee on Justice. With me here today is the Vice Chair, Senator Joanne Brown, and Senator Talataytukui, and Senator Jesse Luhon, Sisus Masi colleagues for being here with us today. This is a confirmation hearing for the appointment of Attorney Sean Edward Brown to serve as magistrate judge, Superior Court of Guam. I'd only ask that you all who are going to testify verbally that you state your name for the records because it's being transcribed and that we'll be able to account for who's speaking at all times. And that's probably all we need to do for rules for now. All right. So I think that's it. We'll get started. The appointment of Attorney Sean Edward Brown to serve as a magistrate judge of the Superior Court of Guam was received by the legislature on June 18, 2024, and referred to this committee on June 20, 2024. I'd like to welcome Attorney Sean Brown and all his family who are here, and colleagues, of course, and my colleagues in the Guam Bar who are here, and of course, the Chief Justice, thank you for being here today. All right. The current statute regarding the eligibility and suitability of a magistrate judge says that to be considered qualified to serve the people of Guam as magistrate judge of the Superior Court of Guam, an appointee must meet the following qualifications: be at least 30 years of age, meet the qualifications required of a Superior Court judge as follows: a United States citizen, a bona fide resident of Guam for at least five years, in active practice of law on Guam for at least 10 years before said nomination; the presiding judge and each other judge of the Superior Court of Guam shall be a United States citizen, a bona fide resident of Guam for at least five years, in active practice of law on Guam for a period of seven years before said nomination; be a member in good standing of the Guam Bar Association, not have been convicted of any felony or any misdemeanor involving moral turpitude; not be related by blood within the third degree of consanguinity or marriage to a judge or justice of the courts of Guam at the time of his or her initial appointment; be subject to the same ethical standards as a Superior Court judge or justice, including the Guam rules for judicial disciplinary enforcement. So the committee conducted a background and eligibility review to verify Attorney Brown's eligibility and suitability according to 4401 and sections 3109(c), d, and e of Title VII Guam Code annotated, and has verified that he meets the requirements set in Guam law. And so for the record, we have received written testimony from the following: Sylvia and Robert Brown, Philip S. Entiron, Jeffrey McDowell, Shereen Brown, Linda Tuckey, Jason V. Luhon, Attorney William Salasbury, Thomas M. Parker, Attorney Anthony C. Perez, Ariola Law Firm, LLC, Attorney Jaclyn T. Turlahi, President Guam Bar Association, Mariana Piper Crisostomo, Attorney Mary Ann Wallacechuck, Elisa Italoo, Legal Clerk, Office of the Attorney General. And now we will receive oral testimony. And so we've asked the Chief Justice to please start us off. And I'm just looking if there are any other justices or judges here, and if not, then Chief Justice, please proceed.
Good evening, Madam Speaker, Vice Chairwoman Brown, Senator Titegui, Senator Luhon. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony in support of Attorney Sean Brown's confirmation to serve as a magistrate judge of the Superior Court. I've submitted a letter of testimony in support of Attorney Brown, but I felt it was important for me to come in as well personally and talk about Attorney Brown and provide oral testimony. Earlier this year, with magistrate judges cease on second term coming to a conclusion, I requested the Guam Bar Association to solicit interest for the next magistrate position. Attorney Brown was one of three candidates that was nominated by the Guam Board and transmitted to me, and after receiving these nominations, I convened a panel of three judicial officers and one staff attorney to review the resumes and conduct interviews with me. After a rigorous interview process, Attorney Brown was unanimously recommended by the panel. His extensive litigation experience makes him exceptionally well-suited for the demands and duties of a judicial officer. For the past decade, he served as an Assistant Attorney General at the Office of the Attorney General, prosecuting violent crimes, property crimes, and DWI offenses. But beyond his experience, Attorney Brown possesses the character and temperament for a life on the bench. He possesses a judge's temperament, and that shapes the entire courtroom environment, setting the tone for each trial and ensuring that justice is administered with fairness and equity. In many ways, a judge's demeanor reflects their ability to effectively manage their cases. Attorney Brown's record demonstrates his deep understanding of these principles and his capacity to handle significant legal issues with the impartiality required for this position. Magistrates play a critical role in our judicial system. Beyond their broad responsibilities in the civil cases, they oversee the first appearances of criminal defendants, handle the arraignments, set or modify bail, order pretrial conditions or detentions, accept pleas, sentence misdemeanants, and enter judgments. Their duties are essential to ensuring the timely delivery of justice for our community. With Ilhez Letourne's approval, Attorney Brown will continue his service to the people of Guam as a magistrate judge. We thank the committee for expediting this request and respectfully urge Ilhez Letourne to confirm his appointment. I do want to add one note that was not included in my public testimony, Madam Speaker, and that concerns Sean while he was a law clerk at the Superior Court. Being an attorney, being a clerk can be demanding and stressful position, and it requires a high level of commitment and integrity. When his wife was diagnosed with a very serious medical condition, he faced a difficult situation of how to support his beloved partner while she was off island for medical treatment and yet still be the breadwinner for their family. He showed remarkable courage and dedication by balancing his personal and his professional responsibilities, and he did what was necessary for his family and for his work. And he earned my admiration for the stress and for the situation that he went through during that timeframe, and I was deeply impressed by his resilience, and I'm proud to have appointed him subject to Ilhez Letourne's confirmation. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Masi, Chief Justice Torres. Are there any questions from any of the senators for the Chief Justice? Not?
Thank you.
Sisus Masi, thank you. I'd like to invite Attorney General Douglas Moylan to testify.
Good evening, Madam Speaker, Senator Luhon, Senator Brown, Senator Titegui. I think one of the comments that I can make on this confirmation hearing for Sean is that my loss is the judiciary's gain. I see us all as lawyers in this room and my colleagues behind me as people that love the law. And from the executive branch point of view, we are your law enforcers for laws passed by the legislature. It has been both my honor to have served this government since I was the first elected AG 16, 17 years ago, and again, to hold the people's trust to be the chief law enforcement officer for this, for your term. I knew Sean when I was a defense attorney, and I think one of the first cases which really brought our skills up against one another was an actual trial where Sean was the, obviously the prosecutor, and I was representing a court-appointed client. Sean showed me that he believed in representing the people, he believed in protecting our community, but more so, he showed me that he could play by the rules. And for me, as an attorney general, you know, we're all given a set of rules that we have to follow, and that you get some nasty attorneys that, you know, questionable whether they're going outside the rules or whether they're actually following the rule of law. Sean has never, in my, having known him for many years, gone outside the realm of being a good prosecutor and following the rules. There's not many people that I would come to a public hearing for to speak on their behalf, but when I heard that Sean had the opportunity and had moved into the judicial branch, I thought that that was a good evolution for who I think Sean is. I see Sean as a good man, first and foremost. I see him, and he's probably not going to laugh again, but I mean, I called him a Boy Scout before. I was a Cub Scout. So when I see Sean, I think of like the English Army walking in against the Zulu warrior, which, as a defense attorney, that was my role. I was there to do anything I could do to help my client win. And Sean was there following the rules, you know, saying that this is how we're gonna, we're gonna convict your client, that sort of thing. But being the defense attorney, it was wily coyote time, you know, whatever it took in order to put my client in the best frame of light in front of the jury and hopefully to get that acquittal. But having worked with Sean for the past, about a past year or so, it's truly a loss for the people of Guam from the attorney general's perspective. I think that Sean is our felony major crimes prosecutor. I saw Basil back there, too. I'm still trying to get that guy to come back as a retiree to our office, but, you know, life goes on and we all have our priorities in life, but I want to say that I fully endorse Sean as a magistrate. He's been part of the whole, in my opinion, the whole issue with Guam struggling with different types of crimes, the catch, release, reoffend, trying to make the right call when you're a magistrate. And I think that Sean, because of his background, because of his criminal law background, will make not only a good magistrate, but a good person trying to balance, should this person be held over or should this person be watched over as they approach the criminal justice system as it's beginning as a magistrate? So again, I would like to voice my one-person support of Sean Brown on his journey to become a magistrate judge, and the only thing I could say is, I know the term is limited, so there's always an opportunity for the Attorney General's office to get him back, I hope, at one, one point in time. And I welcome, I would welcome him back into our office. That's the type of person that I think Sean is to our client, the people of Guam. Thank you very much, senators.
Sisus Masi, Attorney General. Is there any questions or comments for the Attorney General from the senators?
Thank you very much.
Sisus Masi. I'd like to invite now a couple of attorneys: Attorney Anthony Perez, Attorney Christine Tenorio, and Attorney Mary Ann Wallacechuck. Ms. Tenorio, you may go first. Or you turn on your microphone, please. Yeah, thank you. Attorney Tenorio.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Speaker, Senators Luhon, Senators Brown, and Senator Titegui. My name is Christine Tenorio. I'm an Assistant Attorney General with the Office of the Attorney General of Guam. I have worked with Mr. Brown for over 11 years. I believe that we've worked together the longest out of any of his colleagues in the Guam Bar Association. And over these past 11 years, I've watched Attorney Brown evolve. You know, we were just baby prosecutors until now we're the most senior attorneys at the Attorney General's Office, General Crimes Division. Now, in his evolution, I've watched Mr. Brown evolve into a great attorney who's always on a quest for justice. And it's justice for all victims, no matter how difficult the case, no matter if it's a misdemeanor, if it's a felony. Sean Brown is truly seeking justice in every single one of these cases. Mr. Brown has great instincts and analytical skills and is always trying to help find solutions to problems which are not even his own, which problems that other colleagues may have. Mr. Brown has used these skills to train and develop other attorneys, always trying to make the office better as a whole. And I think that really speaks to his character and would be a great asset for him on the bench because he is always seeking the greater good and it's never about personal benefit. It's really how justice can be better served on this island. Mr. Brown is always willing to aid in any way he can. He rarely says no when he is asked for assistance. And in times of chaos or strife, he is, keeps a level head, and he always stays respectful, which, as a magistrate judge on the bench, I think that would be an excellent quality to have as he is, he, again, always keeps a cool head. I've always known Mr. Brown to be ethical and fair. He's always standing up for what is right, and he never waves in his morals. I know that he will be an excellent magistrate judge as he does seek justice and it's never one-sided. I think his being a defense attorney and a prosecutor is testament to the fact that he can be the neutral arbiter that we need in a magistrate judge. Mr. Brown is never swayed by politics, so again, as a member of the bench, that is a crucial trait to have. So it is for all these reasons that I encourage all the members of the Guam Legislature to confirm the appointment of Sean Brown as a magistrate judge. And although Mr. Brown's departure will be bittersweet because he is one of the best assets that we have at the Office of the Attorney General of Guam, I know that likewise, Mr. Brown will be a major asset to the Superior Court of Guam. Thank you.
Sisus Masi, Assistant Attorney General Tenorio. Are there any questions for her from the panel? I want to thank you for your work and your testimony, Sisus Masi. Attorney Perez?
Thank you. Good day, Speaker Turlahi, Senator Luhon, Senator Brown, Senator Titegui. My name's Tony Perez. I'm a lawyer on Guam and a member of the private, member of the private defense bar. I'm here, just like everybody else, to strongly support Sean's nomination and confirmation to be a magistrate judge, and I have no question in his ability to fulfill that role. Now, I've known Sean since 2014. When I say know him, that's when I started working with him, when he was a prosecutor at the AG's office. Prior to that, my only knowledge of Sean was I'd see him walking around Agania with a whole bunch of law clerks, and he'd stand out. So, you know, this tall redhead, but I mean, as anyone who lives, who works in Agania knows, these law clerks walk around like a pack, and they walk, and they're the only people who walk to subway. Everyone else drives. So I'd see Sean, you know, I didn't know him, just some tall redhead guy. I thought he was some seasonal lawyer, like a lot of these law clerks are. They come for a year and they leave. And then in 2014, you know, he started working the AG's office, and I realized, hey, this, this guy's still here. So I'm thinking, he must be one of those, what we call the, one of those five, the five-year rule attorneys. Basically, if you're barred in, barred in another jurisdiction, you can come and work on Guam for the government for five years without having to take the Guam Bar. And, you know, being on Guam, we see so many of those people come and go. So 2014, I started working with Sean, I'm thinking, this guy will be here a couple more years, you know? But my conception of Sean changed, and this was about, you know, not changed in the, in the legal sense or the skill sense or anything like that, but more, my conception of Sean changed in kind of like the, the personal sense about five years ago. Because five years ago, I was at Skinner Plaza, and I was talking to my friend, who's actually right there, he parks next to me at work, he's from the fire department. So I was talking to him at Skinner Plaza, and he goes, you know, just like talking, you know, it's like a Christmas function or something. So I was talking to him, and he goes, hey, Tony, you know, my son-in-law's, my son-in-law's a lawyer on Guam, so, you know, I'm kind of racking my brain, what lawyers have I seen at Skinner Plaza that night? There were a million people. The only person I could think of was like Sean Brown, you know, like thinking Sean Brown has no affiliation with my friend. He goes, yeah, right there, that guy. He points to Sean with his wife and all the, and I think it was three kids, but there seemed to be a bunch of kids around him, and he's like telling me, hey, that's his son-in-law. And it's then that I realized that, you know, Sean's not one, Sean's not a seasonal lawyer who came here to get experience and work, you know, and then go back to the mainland for a better job. Sean's married to a local. He loves, and as I've grown to know him, he loves Guam, he's rooted in Guam, and he cares for Guam. And this is, you know, and this is why Sean, though he's not from here, has a focus on public service and specifically for probably over the past 10 years, service at the Attorney General of Guam's, you know, service for the past 10 years at the Attorney General of Guam. Now, I do note that Sean, I think it was early 2023, left to work with Louis Yanza, but I think he realized, you know, private practice isn't for him, you know, making all the money isn't for him. He wants to go back to public service, and, and that's what he did. And as being a magistrate, he's showing his intention and his love for Guam by continuing, by continuing his love for the island and serving the island through, through first being a prosecutor, and then hopefully now being a magistrate judge. Sean was a great prosecutor, and as Christine said, and Attorney General Moylan may have said, he, a word you're always going to hear about Sean is the word fair. And he was really fair, and he was really a pleasure to work with, and I'm going to, I'm going to miss him, I'm going to miss working with him, though, you know, from the prosecution-defense side, but I will enjoy seeing him as a, as a, as a magistrate judge. Now, Sean, you know, I mean, every time there's a judge up for confirmation, you guys always hear the same thing, and I'm gonna, and a lot of them do apply to Sean, so I'll repeat them. Sean's smart, you know? He's highly intelligent, he has a keen legal mind, he has tons of experience to be, to be a judge on Guam. But I think what sets Sean apart, apart from his fairness, I'd say fairness is number one, is this guy is the hardest-working attorney I've ever met and I've ever seen on Guam. For the past, I'd say, three years, and there could be stats to correct me if I'm wrong, he's probably done double or triple the number of trials as the next, as the next, as the second-highest trial practitioner. You know, this guy will do back-to-back-to-back trials without blinking and without concern. And in the middle of his trials, you know, I got my own, you know, selfish needs, and I need, you know, sometimes I need stuff from Sean for a client, and I'll contact him, he's like, hey, I'm really sorry, I can't get to you now, I just finished a murder trial, and now I'm jumping into a rape trial. And then I personally know, two weeks prior, he finished, I don't know, an armed robbery trial, and even in the midst of all that, he'll still contact you, he'll still message you, he'll still, he'll still email you on weekends at 5:00 AM at any time. His work ethic is through the roof, and, you know, I don't know anyone else, I don't know anyone else who has it. If there's any concern about his ability to handle any workload for a magistrate judge, this is going to be a walk in the park for Sean compared to what he's been, to what he's been doing now. Now, finally, and most importantly, Sean has the perfect judicial temperament to be a judge, and since, you know, Christine already kind of talked about his fairness and kindness and everything else, I won't, I won't go too much into it, but I'll just say this. He's kind, and he's fair, and I've, and I've never seen him bully people, I've never seen him cocky, I've never seen him mad, and I've never seen him talk down, talk down to someone. And this is the kind of judge we need, someone who will treat the parties and attorneys with kindness and respect. I mean, the judicial system on Guam is already humming. We have a talented group of justices, judges, referees, and staff, and bringing John in as a, bringing Sean is, is a perfect complement to that already well-oiled machine, and he will continue to serve honorably and expertly, you know? Thank you for the time, and I pray for his swift and hopeful confirmation. Thank you.
Sisus Masi, Attorney Perez. Are there any questions from the senators for Attorney Perez? I'd like to recognize my colleague, Senator Sabina Perez, as well. Thank you for being here, Senator. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Attorney Wallacechuck.
My name is Mary Ann Wallacechuck. Madam Speaker and committee members, thank you for this opportunity. I wish to express my strong and unequivocal support for Sean Brown as the magistrate judge of the Superior Court of Guam. I have known Sean for at least 15 years, ever since he came to Guam and we were law clerks together at the Superior Court. And that's where he began his career in public service. In that time and over the many years that we were at the AG's office together, I have watched Mr. Brown grow and develop into a conscientious, fair-minded, patient lawyer with a strong work ethic. Mr. Brown has devoted the vast majority of his legal career to public service as a criminal prosecutor at the AG's office. As one of a handful of attorneys that was formerly involved in handling appeals over there, and especially in the criminal convictions that Mr. Brown won at trial, I have a unique vantage point on Mr. Brown's work because whenever I handled an appeal, I would go through the entire record. So through the transcripts of the trials and other hearings, as well as the tone and content of the many documents that he filed in criminal cases, I became familiar with his interactions with judges and victims, witnesses, and also defense lawyers and other members of the defense team and staff at the AG's office. Time and again, I have seen that Mr. Brown has engaged with these stakeholders with the utmost respect, care, and professionalism. He exercises good judgment, and he conducts himself in an ethical manner. I see, I see things, and I read things, that other people may not necessarily know because they haven't been following the entire trial minute after minute, but I did. And I know that he has done this all while representing the people of Guam to the best of his undeniably outstanding abilities. In his work, Mr. Brown has demonstrated, demonstrated a deep understanding of the law and the obligations of a prosecutor to preserve the fundamental rights of defendants. With his even-handed temperament and his background as a trial lawyer, he will be an excellent magistrate judge and a credit to the judiciary. He is a great lawyer and a good friend. I support Mr. Brown's nomination without reservation. Thank you.
Sisus Masi, Ms. Attorney Wallacechuck, and appreciate that angle of testimony, being the appeals lawyer. Are there any questions from the senators for any, for attorney? Sisus Masi. All right, now we have, I'm going to call these names, and if you want to give oral testimony, please come up. Otherwise, these are the people who have signed in in support, and it looks like, just give me one second, I think everyone has signed in in support, so all of these people have signed in in support. Not all of them want to give oral testimony, but I'm going to call their names anyways, just in case, and if you'd like to, please have a seat up here. You're invited. Annette T. Santos, my dean, I think it's Roland Santos. Renada Nicholas. Renada Nicholas. Jerry Pangalina. Sherelle Mitchens. Christine Borja. Jacob Wagner. Jay Basil O'Malley. Anthony Tyron. Leah Diaz Ogun. John Morrison. Yolanda Elliott. Belline Nuesa Joyce. Sorry, I can't read that Joyce. J? Juan Lagos. Leonard Repades, Leonardo Repades. Oh. Jacqueline Munoz. Michelle Selanatin. Jennifer Killian. Gabrielle Cruz. Stephen Hattori. I think it's Doyle Womack. Leah Womack. Erin Boyce. Charlie Carson. Charlie. Filte Dinko. Let's see. All right, there's still some others, so we'll get to you right after this panel. All right. We'll start with Annette Santos.
Buenos, San Hafaday, honorable members of the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture. Madam Speaker and Chairperson, Senator Theresa M. Terlahi, Vice Chairperson and Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Jesse Luhon and Senator Telo Titegwe. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak before you this evening and to offer testimony and strong support of the nomination of Sean Edward Brown for magistrate judge at the Superior Court of Guam. My name is Annette Tyron Santos and I come before you to speak proudly in the capacity as Sean's mother-in-law. I have known Sean for a little over 20 years and can attest to his character, his work ethic and the profound sense of justice that he brings to every endeavor. It was in 2004 when my oldest daughter, Shereen, introduced my husband and I to Sean, who was a fellow college freshman attending UC Riverside. They were friends at the time. Seven years later, they would marry and have three wonderful children. This 6'3" red-haired man soon became immersed in a whole new world of trimal culture, values and traditions. And I'm happy to say that Sean adapted easily and navigated respectfully through all the in-law indoctrinations of affectionate banter by granddad, by the uncles, his cousins and the precipacious father-in-law. Having known Sean for many years, both in family settings and through hard work, I can confidently say that he embodies the highest standards of integrity, compassion, humility and fairness. One of Sean's most striking aspects is his unwavering integrity. I've seen this time and again, whether in his professional duties or personal life. Often close family and friends would pose a legal what-if dilemma and always Sean would approach the matter with the same fairness and impartiality that he would in the courtroom. His responses were always sound, compliant with the legal process and always, always offering compassionate support as part of his response. I've noticed this consistency in Sean's thinking, always striking a balance of professionalism and empathy. This level of integrity is one of the qualities that makes Sean exceptionally suited for a role that demands such principled conduct. In family settings, Sean consistently demonstrates humility and fairness. He is the first to listen and understand before making decisions, whether it's with his children or within the broader community. His fairness is not just limited to the courtroom, it is a fundamental part of who he is. I've seen him mediate family discussions with a calm and reasoned approach, always ensuring that every voice is heard and respected. Professionally, Sean is known for his dedication, his diligence and strong work ethic. During his tenure with the Attorney General's Office, he handled a significant caseload with remarkable attention to detail and an unwavering commitment to ethical standards. I recall many times when Sean would be working on a particularly challenging case where his meticulous preparation and deep understanding of the law were instrumental in achieving a fair and just outcome. His ability to navigate complex legal issues with precision and integrity underscores his readiness for the responsibilities of a magistrate judge. In addition to his legal acumen, Sean has proven a record of community involvement. He has consistently volunteered his time and has been actively involved in various community service initiatives. His commitment to serving the public and upholding the law extends beyond the courtroom, reflecting his genuine desire to make a positive impact in our community. Sean's judicial temperament, another key quality that makes him uniquely qualified for the role of magistrate judge. He possesses a remarkable ability to listen impartially, consider all sides of an issue and make fair decisions. His calm and measured approach in both professional and personal situations demonstrates his capacity to handle the pressures and responsibilities of a judicial role with decorum and fairness. Sean is a man deeply rooted in family values. He upholds principles of respect, responsibility and a strong commitment to justice, not only in his professional life, but also within his family. As a husband and father, he sets an extraordinary example of what it means to be responsible and respectful. His children look up to him not just as a father, but as a role model who lives out the values that he teaches. Balancing the demands of a legal career with the responsibilities of family, family life is, it's no small feat. Yet Sean does so with grace and dedication. I recall many instances where despite the pressures of his workload, he would make time for family, ensuring that he was present for important moments and daily routines alike. His ability to remain fully engaged with our family even when his professional obligations are demanding is a testament to his deep commitment to both his work and his loved ones. In summary, Sean is a person of outstanding character, both in his professional and personal life. His integrity, compassion, humility and fairness are not just qualities he demonstrates in the courtroom, they are the core values that guide him in every aspect of his life. His dedication to his family, our community and justice, coupled with his legal expertise and strong work ethic, make him ideally qualified for the position of magistrate judge. Based on my personal and professional experiences with Sean, I offer my strongest endorsement of his nomination. I have full confidence in his ability to serve as an impartial, fair and competent magistrate judge and I am certain that he will continue to uphold the highest standards of justice in this role. Sisus Maasi, for your time and consideration and I sincerely hope that you will favorably support Sean Edward Brown's nomination for magistrate judge in the Superior Court of Guam. He truly is an exemplary nominee who will serve our island community with unwavering excellence. Thank you.
Sisus Maasi, Dean Annette Santos. Is there any, are there any questions? Sisus Maasi. Attorney Basil O'Malley.
Good evening, Madam Speaker, Senators Perez, Senator Luhon, Senator Brown, Senator Titegwe. I come here in full support of Sean Brown's nomination and I'm seeking his confirmation to this magistrate judge position with the Superior Court of Guam. As the former chief prosecutor for the Office of the Attorney General for many, many years, I worked closely with Mr. Brown and I was there from his first hiring at the office and watched him grow legally and professionally and personally over the years. I was always impressed with his hard work, his dedication to the office and his willingness to take on any, any job, any problem we had in the office. And he never wavered. His quest, what is very important, and I believe this was brought up earlier, is his quest was not necessarily for a conviction, although he worked very hard to maintain and get his convictions, it was to make sure justice was done. He made sure that whatever decision he came up with was fair to all the parties, the victim and the defendant, which is necessary in the prosecution. And I was always impressed and whenever I would challenge him on his plea offer, he was always ready to come back and say, this is what he believes is fair for everybody. And I never doubted his integrity in reaching those decisions. At the same time, if he was going to take the matter to trial, I knew he would be thoroughly prepared because he would put in the hours necessary to get the conviction. He handled some of the toughest cases we had in the office, all the murders, aggravated assaults, the occasional rape case, and he did so with honor to the people and to the victim and, like I said, justice to the defendant. On top of all that, I was always amazed and really impressed with his love for the island. It's like Tony Brown, Tony Perez was saying, you know, he's not a seasonal lawyer, he is here, he loves our island, he loves its people. And, and that is what I found is really going to be necessary if he takes the position as magistrate judge. I can honestly say, excuse the light sense of humor, that Sean Brown is not a coconut, he is brown all the way through. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney O'Malley. Are there any questions for Attorney O'Malley? Former chief prosecutor, Sisus Maasi, thank you for your service as well and thank you for your testimony. Attorney John Morrison.
Evening, Madam Speaker and committee members. It's very validating hearing some of this testimony because now I know that I'm not alone in how I feel about Sean Brown. He's a terrific member of our bar and I'd like to offer my strong support. By way of introduction, I'm a public defender. It's high-volume work and Sean's work is high-volume as well. So we have been in courtrooms together for over a decade now and have appeared on, I would say, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of cases together, but it's probably even more than that. Relative to Sean's character, in dealing with someone that consistently and that frequently, there has just never been a time that I felt like Sean was being deceptive or was being dishonest with me. He's just a very honest person and I think that'll serve him well on the bench. There's just never been a time where it was close to the line. Sean's word is his stock and trade and he takes it very seriously. And it shows and the people that interact with him know that he's being honest. Now, this isn't to say that we come running across the room at each other and I immediately want to show him all my cards and he shows me all his cards and, and, you know, it's not like that. We're advocates and we're adversaries and that's by design, that's how our system works. But you know that he's being honest with you, that he's just a very honest and straightforward person. The other thing I wanted to say that I think would serve him well is what I expect will be his judicial temperament. There have been many times that Sean has won a conviction and there have been many times that a client of mine has entered into a plea agreement and faced a sentencing. There's just never been a time where Sean said that this person is abhorrent or this person is disgusting or anything like that. He, he will say that the conduct is abhorrent, but he doesn't isolate the person into thinking that the courtroom isn't somewhere they can get justice. And I think that's an incredibly important skill that he's shown over the years. Next, I think probably all the committee members know that I'm the vice president of the Guam Bar Association and our president could not be here, but she requested that I extend her strong support as well. And she indicated that she was going to file a letter. I heard from the announcement that that's been filed now, so I wanted to acknowledge that. The third capacity that I wanted to testify in is as Annie Gale's friend and she requested that I extend her agency's strong support for Sean as well, but she could not make it here. Those are my comments, senators. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Sisus Maasi, Attorney Morrison, deputy director, right, of the Public Defender. Sisus Maasi. Are there any questions from the senators for Attorney Morrison? Thank you. Jordan Penlu.
Hafaday, thank you, Madam Speaker. My name is Jordan Palloun, I am a member of the Guam Bar and currently legal counsel at Guam Memorial Hospital. Among my prior roles, I have served as an assistant attorney general and research attorney at the Supreme Court of Guam. I also have both civil experience for public and private clients along with criminal experience both on the prosecution and defense sides. I also have a background in law and economics with a master's degree. And I only mention this as it informs my assessment and recommendations concerning Sean Brown and his nomination to the position of magistrate judge to the Superior Court of Guam. The American Bar Association Standing Committee on the Federal Judiciary evaluates candidates for federal judicial office based solely on three criteria: integrity, professional competence and judicial temperament. Each candidate receives one of three ratings: well-qualified, qualified or not-qualified. Instead of simply talking about my personal experiences with Sean Brown, both as a colleague and as a member of the community, I think it may be more helpful to objectively analyze Sean's qualifications for the positions of magistrate judge in a similar manner to that employed by the American Bar Association. I've done this by reviewing Sean's writings, court appearances and reputation in the community and these evaluations shouldn't be newer shocking, but a, but a confirmation of Sean's qualifications. As to integrity, Sean is known as an aggressive and capable prosecutor. While he has a passion for protecting the community from those who commit criminal acts, Sean has demonstrated a commitment to respecting the rights of criminal defendants. Sean has been described by some criminal defense attorneys as absolutely ethical and a fair person who seeks justice. Given my personal observations of Sean and my review of his record, prosecutors and other attorneys also have raised no reason to question his integrity, similarly describing him as ethical and fair. He is known in Guam for his commitment to his family and community and with respect to his community involvement, it has been noted that he has taught at the University of Guam and volunteered as a mock trial judge. With respect to the integrity criteria, Sean should be viewed as well-qualified. With respect to professional competence, Sean has a long history as a criminal prosecutor and extensive trial experience. I have reviewed Sean's substantial legal filings and observed him in court. I have also discussed Sean's performance with other lawyers and members of the community and reviewed public comments made about Sean. I've also personally reviewed entire records from Sean's trials when I've been handling appeals at the Attorney General's Office. With respect to his practice area, Sean has a reputation for being competent in the practice of law. Sean does lack some experience in the civil litigation and business matters, but has gained exposure to these via time in private practice and as a law clerk to the Superior Court of Guam. And Sean has, and for federal nominees, the ABA typically requires 14 years of experience, but Sean's 12 years of experience in Guam and a year as a law clerk bring him well within the margins of this criteria. He, he will be licensed for approximately 14 years, starting in 2025, based on his first admission to a state bar. With respect to the professional competence criteria, Sean should be viewed by this committee as qualified for this job. For judicial temperament, individuals that work with Sean, both in the same office and opposite sides of the courtroom, describe him as level-headed and calm. I have observed Sean to have these same qualities. Sean is not prone to making decisions based on emotion, but instead based on a careful analysis of the legal issues and facts of a particular case. Sean carefully, calmly and proficiently presents his cases in both the Superior Court and the Supreme Court of Guam. Many of these skills are easily transferable to the position of magistrate judge and the legislature will even see Sean's temperament in his testimony here today. The senator's personal experience with Sean will and should inform their decision about The senators' personal experience with Sean will and should inform their decision about his qualifications. With respect to judicial temperament, I think every, members of the community and this committee should view Sean as well-qualified. In a holistic assessment of Sean's judicial qualities, based on the same criteria applied by the American Bar Association Standing Committee on the Federal Judiciary concerning candidates for federal office, Sean should be viewed as well-qualified for the position of magistrate judge of the Superior Court of Guam. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Attorney Palloun. Attorney Leonard, Leonardo, I'm sorry, are there any questions for Attorney Jordan Palloun? If not, Sizos Masi, and now Attorney Leonardo Rapadas.
Good evening. I'm Lenny Rapadas, Madam Chair, committee members. Appreciate the time to share my thoughts about qualifications of Mr. Brown, Sean. I'm a former Assistant Attorney General, Attorney General of Guam and United States Attorney. It's fair to say I can't hold a job. I'm speaking as a private person today, and I am speaking in full support of Sean Edward Brown to serve as a magistrate judge in the Superior Court of Guam. I rarely attend these hearings to support my, to voice my support for individuals. They generally hear directly from me, but I feel it is important enough to do so publicly today. Sean first started at the office, at the AG's, at the office in 2013, right? I'm proud to say that I was the one that hired him from the Superior Court, and obviously if I wasn't proud of him, I wouldn't be here today. But I am, I am. Although I did not directly supervise him at first, I reviewed his supervisors' annual evaluations and spoke directly to them about him and his work, and that would be Mr. O'Malley and Mr. Tidengue. I expect Mr. Tidengue to, to mirror some of the things that we're saying today. He was very eager to learn, and he learned very quickly. His skill growth was exponential. He showed himself to be more than capable to handle the position of an Assistant Attorney General. When I returned to the office after a time away, I was able to work and interact with him directly. We had countless discussions regarding our own and each other's cases, including everything from charging criminal violation, criminal violations to trial strategy. I immediately saw that he was seen as a leader among the attorneys in the office and support staff. I have at all times known him to be an exceptional, exceptionally hard worker. He epitomized the word team, always willing to cover court and pick up the ball when needed. The office would rely on him to pull more than his weight in cases and trials. Importantly also, he is well-liked by the staff, his colleagues, law enforcement, his opponents, and the bench, which is a rare commodity these days. The workload of the office is very demanding and not suitable for everyone, yet Sean excelled at that role. He regularly would take over a caseload of other assistants who would leave the office while keeping his own. I strongly believe that that is a real credit to a skill and talent at case management and a quality a magistrate judge with an extremely high caseload should have. On a personal note, Sean is thoughtful, smart, and always professional. I personally worked with him on several major felony cases and saw that firsthand. As a manager for majority of most of my 35 years in practice, I have every confidence that Sean would also excel as a magistrate judge and would be an extraordinary asset for the court. Again, I was, I said I was speaking as an individual, but I do have a job, and I am currently at the alternate Public Defender as a staff attorney, and I have it on good hearsay that the APD also supports him in this endeavor. It's great to hear about Sean from different people and the many different aspects of his life. I'm sure that many of us are thinking, oh, I've never heard that about him, I never heard that about him, you know, so I, I'm one of those people, I didn't know about these other aspects, but it's great, and I feel confident that, that I'm making the right decision in testifying today. One brief, short story here goes to one of the things I think is important is that he has taken Guam into his, his, his life as his own and has become a family on this island. The office used to run these relay races around the islands, 58-mile run around the island with 10 individuals taking different legs as we sweat in the sun and almost die to, you know, to win a prize that, you know, the T-shirts. Well, Sean, he regularly volunteers to take the toughest and hardest legs and the longest legs. One of his last legs was one down south where he had to run uphill for a couple miles, and we waited and waited, and there he was. He comes huffing and puffing over the hill, but we knew he would make it, and he made it. And first, one of the first things he did was, after we did that, we high-fived him, he walked, he staggered over to this house on the side, and this was down south, mind you, and he's a, what are you, 6'3" white boy? And when we're thinking, the rest of our team were thinking, oh, he's going to get beat up, and he comes out smiling with a big, you know, cooler full of beer and soft drinks and says, hey, you know, is my relatives back here? So I'm sure Sean remembers that, although maybe he's, you know, blind from the running, but that, that was one thing that is ingrained in my mind as far as the personal side of him, but he is a, a very strong and will be a good asset for the court, and I heartily, strongly endorse his, his, his path to the bench for the magistrate judge. Thank you.
Sizos Masi, Attorney Rapadas, former Attorney General of Guam, and thank you very much. Are there any questions for Attorney Rapadas? If not, Sizos Masi. Attorney Stephen Hattori.
Thank you. Good evening, speakers, Senator Perez, Senator Luhan, Senator Brown, Senator Tidengue. Unfortunately, I haven't had the experience of working with Sean Brown, although I've spent many hours trying to recruit him. And before I came today, I actually Googled "public servant" on, and his picture came up. So really, if you want a public servant, it is Sean Brown. And I'm not going to really belabor the point. I do want to share one story. He's a Eucharistic minister in Baragada, I'm not sure if he still is, and I was, after a trial once, I'm like, bro, why were you excluding all these residents from Baragada, man? They're your parish, but don't you want them in your jury? And I'm like, because, you know, as a defense counsel, I would want them on my jury, right, if I was a Eucharistic minister in Baragada? And he told me like, you know, it's unfair, and, you know, I'm like, geez, Sean, you're so ethical. I mean, that really highlights his ethics where, I mean, you know, you're a Eucharistic minister, you're looked upon by everybody in your parish, and you specifically exclude them. I'm sure they always say like, bro, why didn't you pick me as your juror? And he's saying like, no, it wouldn't have been fair because, you know, I'm a minister in your parish. So, I mean, that's the kind of person we have with Sean Brown. And especially for this job, most people think magistrate judges are not as important as a trial judge. It's the exact opposite. The magistrate judge is the most important judge, and the reason why, at least for our clients, is because our clients have been arrested, right? They've sometimes spent 24 hours, 48 hours in jail, and then they come before a person who decides their fate, who decides whether or not they go home that night to their family, who decides whether or not they go home and continue with the job that they have to support their family. And this magistrate judge serves this very important role. And I know that Sean Brown is a family man, and I know that he will see our clients as somebody's father or mother, brother, sister, son or daughter, and that's the kind of person we need as a magistrate judge. It's not a matter of just locking people up and throwing away the key. It's about weighing really the risk that these individuals will pose to the public or to the alleged victim. And I have like 100% confidence in Sean Brown's ability to make that distinction. And, and I say this knowing that in the future, he's going to deny release for some of my clients, but whatever his decision is, I have 100% faith in his ability to make that decision. And it's a very important decision because whether you're confined or not pending trial, so many things are set in motion, right? You can lose your job, you can lose your home, you can lose your family. And I think that Sean Brown is strong enough to make a decision, not just based on rhetoric, but actually based on true risks and based on the risk assessment tools that he will be given and based on his, his fine judgment. So I, I fully support Sean Brown, and I fully anticipate him holding some of my clients in jail, but I know that he'll give us a fair shake at the end of the day. So I urge you to approve this confirmation, and really the only question should be like, when can you start, right? So hopefully that'll be soon. Thank you.
Sizos Masi, if confirmed, the proposed start date is on the retirement of the current magistrate, which is in October. All right. Before we begin with Attorney Phil Tidengue, are there any questions for Attorney Hattori? Any? Sizos Masi, Attorney Hattori, Executive Director, Public Defender. Appreciate your testimony here today. Also, I'm just going to call the last of the list here, Gloria Rudolph, Raymond Ilagan, Nathan Tennyson. If any of you or anyone else would like to testify, please have a seat up here at the panel. And now we'll hear from Attorney Phil Tidengue.
Oh, good, I'm not the last one. All right, yeah, I'm, for full disclosure, I'm kind of biased. I was part of the Board of Governors that sent Sean's name to the Chief Justice, plus Sean's a graduate of the law school my daughter just graduated from over in Cowas, so I'm biased in that sense. And, you know, to add to what everybody has said about him possessing the proper qualifications, he has the intelligence, the skill, the integrity, the impartialness, the temperament. And the reason why I think he has all of those is I, I just want to read something that I think he reflected this as a prosecutor. And it's almost 100 years old, this Supreme Court opinion, Justice Sutherland, he wrote that a prosecutor, he may prosecute with earnestness and vigor, indeed, he should do so, but while he may strike hard blows, he is not at liberty to strike foul ones. It is as much his duty to refrain from improper methods calculated to produce a wrongful conviction as it is to use every legitimate means to bring about a just one. That's Sean Brown. And when a prosecutor has that characteristic, who seeks justice, not merely to convict. Now, I know some folks that run for offices or into, you know, getting the convictions, but it's about seeking justice, and to be a magistrate, you got to make sure you do that. And I think everybody here has basically said that, this is, this is who Sean Brown is, and I think that that opinion from almost 100 years ago is reflective of him, and, and that's why he has those characteristics. So I urge you to confirm him to become a magistrate, and I was going to say because it adds to DEI, but actually, he's a local now, so please do so. Thank you very much.
Sizos Masi, Attorney Tidengue, are there any questions for Attorney Tidengue? I want to thank you as well for your service. We'll now hear from Gloria Rudolph.
Good evening, Madam Speaker, Senator Perez, Senator Luhan, Senator Brown, Senator Tidengue. And I think there is a contribution to GEI, DEI, as Mr. Brown is a ginger, so it's nice to see the court is getting a ginger in their, in the ranks. But Sean Brown is, I, I worked with him on the defense side for, I think, about nine years, and I've only had the pleasure of working with him for the past year. And I think the bottom line about him is that he is just a good man, and everything that he does is very well thought out. He's very conscientious. I knew on the defense side, if I wanted a response, I would approach him. If I would try to make the case that there was some kind of humanity in the person that I was representing, and there was a context to this awful act that they were charged with committing, that he would listen to me, I mean, hear me out and consider it. And oftentimes, he saw it. So he is not just a strong prosecutor, he is someone who is open-minded, fair-minded, and is able to weigh all of the, I guess, all the consequences of the action that he's taking with the power that he has. So it's a great compliment, you know, to the court, you know, that they're going to be receiving him. I think he makes everyone proud, and he is a true leader wherever he, he is at. So it's nice to know that there is going to be someone like him. Being a magistrate judge, as Mr. Hattori mentioned, it is a very pivotal point in people's lives, the defendant, the victim, the families of both. So it's nice to know that there's going to be someone who's so well-rounded at that position of power, and I, I hope that you definitely confirm him, and I'd like to congratulate him and his family on this next chapter in their lives, and I'm thankful that the people of Guam still have him at their service. Thank you.
Sizos Masi, Attorney Rudolph, also Chief Prosecutor right now?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Thank you again for your testimony. Are there any questions for Attorney Rudolph? If not, thank you very much for your service and for your testimony. All right. If there anyone else who would like to testify? If not, we're going to call the nominee himself, Mr. Sean Brown. Before you begin, for those who are listening, I'm just going to read some excerpts from your resume. So Attorney Brown graduated from the California Western School of Law in San Diego in 2010 with a Juris Doctorate. He was on the Dean's Honors List, Public Interest Law Foundation, Pro-Bono Honor Society, Inter-school Negotiation, and Moop Court Competition participant. He also graduated with a Bachelor of Science in Sociology, Law and Society, and a minor in Political Science from the University of California, Riverside. He was, he has, he is currently employed at the Office of the Attorney General of Guam, Assistant Attorney General Prosecutor from April 2013 to March 2023, and from October 2023 to present. Participated in over 50 felony trials, trained and supervised over a dozen attorneys, prepared appellate briefs and argued before the Guam Supreme Court, appeared on behalf of the Office of the Attorney General of Guam in federal court, acted as the lead of violent crimes, property crimes, and DWI offenses, obtained multiple convictions of murder, first-degree criminal sexual conduct, and other offenses that carry life sentences. He worked from March 23, 2023 to October 2023 at the Office of Louis J. Yanza in Guam in civil matters. There's a whole list of them, and also represented criminal defendants in District Court for pretrial matters and negotiations. He worked for the Superior Court of Guam as a law clerk from July 2011 to April 2013. He was Commander, Navy Region Southwest, Office of the General Counsel, San Diego, California. He was a legal intern there from August 2010 to December 2010, there working with the Admiral. He was also a certified legal intern in the San Diego City Attorney's Office from May 2010 to August 2010, and at the UC Riverside Police Department Community Service Officer Program from, he was an administrative supervisor, field training officer, and community service officer from December 2004 to June 2008. And before that, he worked at In-N-Out as a cashier at Hacienda Heights in California from January 2003 to December 2003. And I hope that doesn't embarrass you, I really wanted to show your record and that, yeah, what you're bringing to the bench. He also serves as an adjunct prosecutor, University of Guam, 2013 to 2020, a volunteer judge for mock trial competition in 2012, Boys and Girls Club volunteer, 2009, Board of Trustees, Guam Law Library, 2019 to the present. Attorney Brown, you're, we welcome you here, and we look forward to your testimony.
Hafaday, Madam Speaker, Senator Tidengue, Senator Brown, Senator Luhan, and Senator Perez.[1799.51] People keep asking me if I'm gonna be nervous up here, and I am, a little bit. Um, I don't usually get nervous, not anymore, but, um, I'll, I'll try to keep things brief because we've been here for a while and I, I don't wanna repeat what everybody has been saying about me. But, um, I just wanna make it very clear, I only asked three people to speak today. Everybody else that talked, uh, just, it warms my heart to know that I have so much support and love, um, in the community. People appreciate what I've done. No matter what you guys decide today, I get to go home happy. But anyways, I, I asked Ms. Tenorio to speak, um, because she is Guam's best attorney and she's known me for a long time. Um, I, I've asked Mr. O'Malley to speak, uh, because it's his fault I'm here. You know, if he didn't make that decision to hire me, uh, with Mr. Rapadas in 2013, I would never be here. He also was my mentor. So I think having him here is very important. I think he just flew in, uh, from the Philippines fairly recently. And I also asked my mother-in-law to speak. I would say I begged, um, you know, I, I call her mom, everybody else calls her dean or doctor. And the reason why I asked her to come is because she knows me outside of my law degree. And I thought that that would be very important for you guys to hear. So everybody else is just bonus and I really appreciate it. So I thank everybody here. Um, there's even some people that just, uh, prepared written statements. I, I've read most of them, I'll read everything by the time I'm done. Um, and I appreciate all those words. My son's, uh, classmates and teacher even wished me luck. So, you know, I get to, I get to go home knowing that my son told his classmates, my dad might become a judge. So like I said, I, no matter what, it's already a beautiful moment for me. But you guys are not probably too interested in the people I have to thank, but why would I be a good judge? Um, so I'll start off with my childhood. Um, I was raised by three parents, my mom, my father, and my stepmom. And they did everything they could to give me values and, and teach me to do the right things. But the one thing I think that they showed me that's gonna carry out through my life is you can be successful, you can be competitive, you can work hard, but you can still be compassionate. You can still be kind. No matter what you do in your life, no matter how hard you work or where you wanna go, you don't have to step on people. You can always do it the right way. So that's one thing I think, um, my parents taught me and I'm gonna, it's gonna stick with me forever, wherever I go, whatever I do. Um, but it's my time at the AG's office, I think that's most relevant to you all, is, um, you know, I, I was assuming someone was gonna ask, if you've been a prosecutor so long, are you gonna be a good judge? Are you gonna be one-sided? Um, and I'm not gonna be one-sided. Uh, in my entire career, I've always considered what the other side has to say. I'd send emails to defense attorneys saying, tell me your client's story, I wanna know about it, so I know how to decide what's gonna happen. You know, cause it like, everybody's been saying prosecutors have a lot of power. And it's not to chase convictions, it's to chase justice. Victims want their day in court and you have to give that to them if you have the ability to. But you don't have to trample on the defendant's rights to get, to do that. You can still get justice by listening, by being fair. And I think that's actually more important than just bullying somebody into a plea deal. Um, so I think sometimes we need to have a trial just because we can't negotiate it. And I think that's important. When I do trials, I try to consider what the defense is gonna say. Um, and I, and then doing that the last 10 years, I have a good idea of where they're coming from. Not only from the, my conversations with the attorneys, my conversations with the victims and the parties, but when I've done these trials, you learn so much about how the process works. So I will always be fair. And I think my time at the AG's office only made me more fair. I believe I'll be efficient, I'll be fast, I'll be consistent. Um, I've handled 500 cases at a time in my office. I, I've handled that while governing court, while doing motions, doing appeals, and, um, we're gonna move cases. If you guys let me become a magistrate judge, we're gonna move cases. We're gonna get things done, people will be heard, people will get their day in court. And I'm not just a lawyer, um, I'm a family man. I think probably above all, I just wanna be a good father, I wanna be a good husband. And, um, I've never put my family aside to chase my career. My wife was the first person I talked to before I said, I'm gonna apply for this job. Um, and she's always been my biggest supporter. So, um, I'm not just a lawyer, I'm a human being too, and I'm gonna carry that out as a judge, if you guys, uh, let me. I was also, they already brought it up, I was teaching at UOG, I love teaching. Um, I wish I could keep teaching and maybe when this career of mine's over, I'll go back. Um, but I had to kinda give that up because I wanted, my kids are getting older, I wanna keep working on that. And, uh, my job was getting me into a place where, you know, I have to do the bigger cases now, so I can't waste my time, um, on anything that's, um, not my children, not my wife, and not immediately chasing justice. So, um, anyways, I just wanna highlight that I'm not, I'm not just a lawyer, I'm not just a law degree, I'm a human being. Um, I'm also very sincere about this. Um, people go to law school to be successful lawyers, to be civil lawyers, contract lawyers, criminal lawyers. I went to law school to help people, I always wanted to be a judge. From day one, I wanted to be a judge. I didn't even wanna be a lawyer, I just know that you have to, you have to do the proper things to get there. So, um, I'm very sincere about this. Every opening on this island for judge in the last seven, eight years, I've, I've applied for. And I will continue doing it, even if I'm not successful today. So, um, if you guys don't nominate me, I'll be back in a few years. And I'll keep coming back. I told the same thing to Justice Torres, I think that's why he's, he nominated me, because he went, he didn't wanna see me anymore. So, um, I'm very sincere about this. This is what I wanna do with my life, this is my dream, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep following it as long as I can. Um, if you guys wanna know if I'm committed to the island, I'm not sure if that is a question anymore, but I would like to highlight this. First, when I first came to Guam, um, we weren't married yet, my wife and I. The priest said, you can't live with her until you guys are married. I didn't have a job, I just got here, I didn't know what I was gonna do. My wife's grandma, Matilde, um, she let me live with her for, I think, nine months or 10 months. She actually, her death anniversary is, uh, is today. It's the ninth night of her first year anniversary, she died last year. We're all supposed to be at church, but oddly enough, the power went out in Baragada and the church was canceled. So even now, she's still with me, she's still watching over us. But the best thing about her is that she really introduced me to the culture on Guam, uh, in addition to my wife and her family. But every morning, she would make me breakfast, eggs, ham, spam, bacon, french, uh, toast, coffee, rice. And I don't, I don't even eat breakfast, I never have, um, at least not since I've become an adult, but she would make me eat. Um, and you know, after about two months of that, she said, boy, you're getting chunky. But I think that just highlights, uh, the kind of, um, culture that, that's here, is everyone's upfront, straightforward, kind, warm, generous, and accepting. And I always felt at home, wherever I go here on the island. Uh, there's another person that's passed away I wanna talk about is my wife's grandfa, uh, grandfather on her mom's side, uh, Phil Tyron Senior. You know, when I first came to Guam, I wasn't sure what it's gonna be like, but, um, every weekend, we would go down to Mariso, we would have barbecue, we'd play poker, we'd tell stories. Um, and his two gigantic sons, you know, competed with me in a lot of things, but, uh, our conversations were a lot of fun. And that, that made me, I don't wanna say addicted, I, I, I love this island, I wanna do everything I can for this island, I wanna, I wanna give back. And there's one more part of the, the community part that I wanna talk about last, is that, um, when my wife had cancer, uh, it was a tough time. Uh, we were just getting married, we got married in San Dimas Church in Mariso. A few months after that, she was diagnosed, and I was still working for Judge Perez at the time, I was still in the court. Uh, Judge Perez allowed me to work, uh, in the Philippines remotely, this is pre-COVID. So his kindness allowed me to keep my job and still contribute to the court. Um, and I still got to be there for my wife through a very tough time. You know, just the court itself, I also had a line of people who were willing, we didn't have to do it too much, but willing to give me hours of their leave, you know, they, they were willing to give that to me, just to make sure that I get, I get to stay with my wife. So the court's always been a place that I consider, uh, very special to me. Um, the island is always something that's gonna be special to me. I want my kids to grow up here, I want their kids to be safe. Um, that's one of the reasons why I stayed at the AG's office for so long, and I hope to do the same thing and help the island be safe as a magistrate judge. But I also, um, one part of this is that, you know, I, when my wife was sick, I begged God for more time with her. I asked, I begged, um, and he gave it to me, I got 10 ye, more than 10 years. Um, I got three beautiful kids with her. So, uh, every day of my life is bonus and I wanna, I wanna contribute, I wanna give back to the community, I wanna, um, show my wife and her family and the community that I'm here to stay and I wanna do a good job. So, um, if you guys confirm my nomination, um, I will show you all that every word said about me today is gonna be true. And I will do the job, I will do it fairly, I will do it efficiently, and I'll hopefully be a very good magistrate judge. Thank you.
Sitzu Smasi, Attorney Brown, and congratulations on your nomination. The Chief Justice read out the duties of a magistrate. Are you able to perform those to the best of your ability?
Every single one.
Do you feel there's anything, uh, in your, um, that would cause conflict to your duty there?
No, not at all. And if, if anything does come up, you know, people will come before me that I have a relationship to, at that time, I'll be able to address every conflict and make sure that we do everything properly.
All right. So when we did a check of your background, all the clearances came in clear, um, either no records found or just blank, so that, uh, but I'm just gonna ask you, for the record, to your knowledge, do you have any formal complaints, charges, or grievances not disclosed on those records? Have any of those been brought against you?
Everything that I was worried about has been disclosed.
Is there any person who, through a relationship with you, might create a conflict of interest if you are confirmed as a magistrate judge, Sitzu? I guess you've already answered that, what you're going to do if that arises. Do you have any business interests that may be a conflict of interest for you if confirmed?
Uh, we have a house that we rent out, um, but if I become a judge, then I'm, I'm gonna probably either pass it on to my wife's family or to my wife to handle all the rental things, but it's not a, an actual conflict or anything.
All right. Have there been any cases where a conflict of interest was presented and you requested or were asked to recuse yourself?
As a prosecutor, I've, I've encountered that several times. Uh, I, people have asked to recuse me as a prosecutor.
As a prosecutor? And how did you handle that situation?
Um, so it's a little bit different from a prosecutor to a judge. If a judge is asked to be recused, they can't work on that case until the recusal is addressed by a different judge. As a prosecutor, I ask the court to address those things to make sure that it's addressed by a judge. A lot of times, the recusal request is denied, so I'm allowed to continue working on the case, of course, until the judge decides otherwise. There are times where I'm uncomfortable with handling a case, and I will tell my office I won't do it. But, uh, if it's something that was coming from the defense side and I'm not sure about it, I'll let the judge decide, or my office will decide, but there are times where I've had to say I can't work on this case, and I will, I won't, I won't do it.
All right. And then, and there are times where the judges have said you cannot work on this case because they find a conflict?
I, I don't know if a judge has already decided on those, there's, there's a couple outstanding right now, but, um, I actually don't think a judge has ever said I'm conflicted.
Oh, okay. What do you think would be the most difficult part of being a magistrate on Guam?
Um, I, so I'm not entirely accustomed to this yet, but like I said earlier, my, my family's my priority. But, you know, before we signed up for this, I talked to my wife about it, and I will be able to accomplish all of the needs of a magistrate judge. I just don't know if Judge Kwan goes on military leave or, um, something like that. I'll, I'll need to be able to be, you know, six days a week, I'll need to be in court and take care of the job, so I'll do all those things. I just am a little bit nervous about how it's gonna impact my family life, but, you know, I'll make sure I do the job.
The hours.
Yes. Well, not, well, hours, the days, the timeframe, I know, I just wanna make sure I'm a good judge, so I'll do whatever it takes to get it done.
All right. So one of the responsibilities of a magistrate judge is, will be to preside over first appearances of criminal defendants and arraignments in criminal cases, set or modify bail, and order pre-trial release conditions or detentions, take pleas, including accepting guilty pleas in misdemeanor cases, sentencing misdemeanors, and entering judgments. How would you, uh, do you believe your, can you describe how your background has prepared you for these?
I, I've probably done more change of pleas than a lot of the judges on the bench currently. Um, it's, it's something that we do every day as a prosecutor. We negotiate the pleas, we execute the pleas, we talk to the victims about the pleas, go to court and make sure that they, they go through. So I am very comfortable doing the magistrate process, the arraignment process, any of the small claims, traffic court, anything that's gonna come before the magistrate judge, my time at the AG's office, or my time with Mr. Yanza's office, I'll be ready for it, I'll be able to accomplish anything that comes before me.
All right. Let's talk about pre-trial release conditions or detention that, uh, sometimes are referred to in the media and by the Attorney General as the catch, release, reoffend, uh, that he sees, and also the community's concerns about risk assessments or the risk to the community of release. Could you talk about how you think you're going to handle that?
So, um, every person that will come before me will have a different set of facts, and you can't look at it as one approach to everything. That, that case will come before me, we'll hear what the AG's office has to say, we'll hear what the defense attorney has to say. Well, there's an ORAS system that has to be considered by the judge, or should be considered by the judge, criminal history, the background, the severity of the case, the danger to the community, the danger to the victim, all those factors will be considered in a case-by-case base, basis. So I think I'll be able to, you know, distribute, uh, the decision fairly. And if, whatever decision I make, I'm gonna explain to the parties why I'm making it. Um, sometimes judges will just say, release denied. I'm gonna explain exactly why their release has been denied, or why their release has been granted. So I plan to be very thorough, um, very consistent, which is important, because a judge has to be consistent, you know, so I, I will, I think I'll be able to fairly handle that.
Thank you. So do you think the assessment tools are adequate to, um, determine the risk of release?
The only time I think the assessment tools may not be adequate is when a case is, like, it's just a first-time offense, but it's extremely egregious. Assessment tools are kind of hard to use, to apply to those cases. So again, it goes to, um, the severity of the case, the likelihood that this person can, may reoffend or hurt the victim, or hurt somebody else in the community. So I think the assessment tools are 95% of the way there, but there's still, you have to consider the specific facts before the court in front of you that day.
Right. I, I believe also that the, this is where there's a discretion that comes in, right? Your discretion in use of the tools, your discretion, like you say, they'll take you 95% or 90%, as you described, and then you have to make a judgment based on everything that you're seeing before you. So for us, I feel like for senators to confirm, uh, a person who it's their discretion that we're going to rely on from then on as to release, as to safety of the community. We've heard a lot of testimony today that gives me a lot more confidence and actually, so for me, I feel good about that, uh, about the experience you've had on, in defense, in prosecution, and in civil work as well. And so, uh, I, I feel that that experience and it's going to be very helpful. Also, your, as the testimony described, your, your work ethic, plus your, your treating people like they are humans, uh, in a courtroom, yet being very concerned, obviously, from your career, that you are concerned with the safety of the community of Guam. So I am very encouraged by that. And I, I wanna thank all of those who testified in that regard as well. So, uh, one of the other tasks as a magistrate judge is resolving civil cases. Um, and I see from your resume, you did some civil work at Louis Yanza's office and, um, maybe before coming to Guam also. Do you, uh, believe your experience, um, will allow you to assist with mediation or settlement of these cases?
Yes. I, I think that when you negotiate a criminal case or a civil case, the email to the defense attorney of the other side is always gonna be the same. What is it that you want from this case? How can we resolve this? As a judge, I'll be able to be a perfect mediator for that, make sure the cases are moving, make sure the attorneys are speaking to each other, and finding out if there is delays, what's causing them, how can we move the case forward? So I, I'm not concerned about being able to process civil cases at all.
All right. Thank you. Well, it sounds like from your experience with the Guam bar members who have testified that, uh, they hold you in high regard as to your dealings with them, or your talking with them, your communications are honest, that your communication, maybe it's good, you'll be able to also mentor them as well from the bench as to how to do this, as you say, make sure that they are talking to each other and all of those things. So I appreciate that. And, uh, um, thank you for your service as a prosecutor. For me, it's very important. I was sad to hear the news that you might be going to be a magistrate, because I really believe the prosecutor's office is in need of very good prosecutors. And I know you were really carrying a huge load there for all of us, and I want to thank you for that. I am very grateful for that and the years that you put in doing that. And, and really, um, that's a sacrifice, so I really want to thank you for that. Thank you. All right. Vice Chair, John Brown, heard there any questions? Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Good evening, Mr. Brown. I guess I could say, Mr. Brown, I'm a Brown. Uh, we're not related though, but, uh, somewhere, somehow. I appreciate, uh, your candor and your testimony and also to have, you know, it's not every day in one's life, you have the opportunity to really get a sense of what your family or your friends or your work, coworkers think of you or your... or your superiors, your bosses, and for you, it's today. And we're certainly very pleased to hear the favorable testimony, particularly with the work you've done at the, you know, as a prosecutor at the Attorney General's Office. You know, we're going through a time on Guam where crime is something that, you know, is in the forefront of many of our people's minds. A lot of frustration, a lot of concern, a lot of sense that your own safety or the safety of your family here is not good. And we are concerned when we see the, you know, we've had concerns where individuals have been arrested and they're put back out on the streets to reoffend and re-harm this community. And so what are your thoughts on that? How would you address that? Because that is a growing frustration. We're also looking at the legislature, where now we're starting to look at how do we tighten? How do we even make these laws harsher? And I say that even though I probably shouldn't, I should be more unbiased, but harsher against criminals because our people really feel unsafe in this community, and that's not a community most of us grew up in Guam. It's changed so much. We, you know, we were children, we got in trouble, our parents knew about it long before we had cell phones because that's the kind of community we had. We knew who was who and who's what. A lot of things today, most people don't even know their neighbors. And a lot of things seep, you know, through that because even as a community, we don't have the same social structure that used to make us responsible, whether we wanted to be or not, because there was always consequence. Some people think, well, you need to hold people's hand and encourage them through it, and hopefully, you know, they'll do the right thing. And sometimes, most people don't choose to do the right thing. And we have, you know, some that are just forever, that's what they're going to choose to do. They're going to be a criminal the rest of their life. And so what are your thoughts? Because you're going to have those individuals brought before you, and you're going to have to make a decision as to whether or not, hmm, do I release this person? Do I throw them in jail? If I release them, are they going to be safe for the community? Are they going to go out and reoffend? Because it's like our people are losing confidence. They're losing confidence in the system. You know, I've had a friend recently tell me, you know, when you look at the daily paper, you're looking at the daily yearbook of criminals on Guam because that's all we read about. And it's a sad state of where we're at, and we're very concerned. As you mentioned, it's a question of justice. Yes, we want to see justice, but we see many of our people who are offended and crimes have been committed against them, some who never, you know, lived to see another day. And there is no justice for them. There's always a feeling of frustration and disappointment with that. And so I wanted to get your feedback, and it's a lot in my question, but I think you get the gist of exactly what it is I'm asking of you.
So a couple of things. I think it's nearly impossible for a judge to correctly predict if somebody is going to be reoffending or not. So, you know, everything's a guess. The prosecutor is guessing if this person's going to reoffend, the defense attorney is guessing, and no one will know until that person's actually released. Our ORAS system is based on the Ohio State Evaluation. So maybe what we could do is try to develop something that's more akin to the island, that can better predict what's happening here. Maybe we can do our own assessment. That'd probably be one way to help the judge have more, you know, better, I guess, guess on if this person's going to commit a crime or not. Another part that we have is we don't really have a lot of treatment options. ADC program is overwhelmed. It's on a moratorium right now. So as a judge, you know, my job is to predict if this person's a danger to the community, then that person can't be released. You know, it also depends on their resources, their ability to post bail, their family support. So all those things are considerations that the judge has to make. How to make that better, I do have ideas, but a lot of that would depend on resources. Resources that I don't know necessarily we have at DOC, that we have in treatment. So, you know, sometimes it's unfortunate that our judges have to make decisions based on the current state of affairs. I plan on being community-based in my decision-making. I will make sure that whatever I'm doing, I consider, is this going to harm somebody? Is this going to, is this person going to come back to me in a couple of days? Also, magistrate judges are in charge of violations and revocations of release and bail motions. So even after someone comes to me for that first day, I'll be able to decide when they come back, how they're performing. Are they checking into probation? Are they testing positive? Are they bothering the victim at all? And I think, based on my experience, I'll be able to be very quick with the right decision. Will I bat 100%? Probably not, but I think I'll do very good. I think I'll be very close to making sure, and whatever changes that need to be made, I'll be able to suggest them. I won't be afraid to make suggestions. If we need to make law changes or we need to find a better place for resources, I'll be a voice in the judiciary to make that happen.
Well, I appreciate your feedback because, you know, there's many, a day we go, what the heck was that judge thinking? And that happens. We do say that every now and then because we're wondering, you know, we look at the crimes that have been committed and we're, it doesn't add up for us. And I think that's where the frustration is. And even though certainly we're in a position here at the legislature to address, you know, further legislation funding and things of that nature, there's just sometimes that feeling does exist in our community. I'm sure you've seen that in your job, being a prosecutor. Probably is one of the toughest positions at the Attorney General's Office and in this community with the type of challenges and crimes that you have to deal with. Some of them, I'm sure, we don't even want to talk about because they're just so heinous, you know, that we are not comfortable or even disturbed that some of these things happen in our community. But I'm just relaying this because I hope you keep that in mind. We are aware, even though sometimes I wonder if our legislature here, we're so, you know, easygoing sometimes because it's a cool thing to do, and yet, you know, we are going through a time on Guam where we are dealing with such a major drug problem and all the connected issues as a result of it that harm our people every single day in this community. I mean, you know, some say, well, let's throw the book at them, and some are like, oh, you need, we need to hold their hand, we need to counsel them, we need to... Whatever ultimately the case may be, it's just we're going through challenging times, and I fear we're going to be going this through quite some time into the future. I mean, for you, and I appreciate the fact you always wanted to be a judge. I never grew up thinking I wanted to be anything in particular. I think to have had that thought and the opportunity after all these years is here and it's in your path. But how do you think you're going to be able to manage that? Because in most cases, you're always dealing, as many of us, you're in a job that nothing but problems are going to come your way. How do you think you're going to be able to manage that? It's one of, a lot of negativity. It's not all rah-rah and fun-fun, you know? We don't get that in the work that we do. How do you think you're going to be able to manage that in making your decisions and, you know, carrying on your responsibilities that you'll have in this position?
I currently have one of the darkest jobs a lawyer can have on Guam. I've had that for a while. Even when I wasn't a homicide prosecutor, I was still prosecuting CSCs, aggravated assaults, and every day, you're dealing with people at the worst stage of their life. They've lost a loved one. I think showing compassion to both parties, our victims, their families, is a good way to start. Listening to what people have to say is a good way to start. I'm not concerned at this point, we never know what's going to happen, that I think as a judge, whatever comes in front of me, I'll be able to handle. I've seen, like you said, heinous cases that I've had to deal with. Conveying that to a jury is a very challenging prospect. And I've done that repeatedly, and I'll keep, you know, if I'm nominated, I'll keep going in that profession. But I think as a judge, I'll be able to handle whatever comes in front of me, no matter what it is, no matter how dark it is or stressful it is or how difficult it is. And, you know, I'll work with other people in the judiciary, other, you know, the administration, other judges, and if we can solve problems, we're going to solve problems.
Well, I appreciate your determination. We don't see that very often, and especially have other attorneys compliment an attorney as a... It's kind of nice because that's not always the case, or we whispering among each other about different things, about different people, different other attorneys. So I do wish you well. I think of all your testimonies, I think the testimony from your mother-in-law is pretty impressive. Not that I know her. I do personally, I do know her. We went to school together. But, you know, that's really something for your family and all those that have worked with you and sometimes have worked on the opposite side of you to provide the testimony of your character. I think ultimately, no matter who you are, what you do, what finances you have, if you don't have good character, you're really not worth much. So I certainly appreciate the testimony that you provided today and your determination and your conviction for the work that you do, and we certainly wish you well. Thank you for answering my questions. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
This is Masih. Senator Brown. Senator Taitye.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and Madam Chair, and good morning, I mean, good morning to, we're always here. Good evening to my colleagues and those who were here tonight to testify. Thank you so much for taking the time out to be here. Especially, we need to hear from the public, you know, in order to make a determination and our decision on whether it's a yes or no. But I took the time and I went to look at your documents, the investigation done by you, and went through it, and I was just talking to a colleague, going, wow, he's kind of squeaky clean, isn't he? Very squeaky clean. But the one thing I did have concern that I saw, of course, the speaker brought that up, was being recused. I think there was an article where somebody was asked that you be recused from that position. But right now, your comments on that was that it's still debatable or...
So...
It was in the paper, by the way.
There was one instance recently, a case that was about to go to trial. There was some discussion whether or not that I represented, I guess, a witness, a very important witness in the case. And I did have representation of her, but, you know, that, again, was very limited. And when that came to court, I asked, you know, I said, file a motion, I think, you know, something we should have the judge address. But it came out later, after the court denied it, the court denied the recusal. Court said he is perfectly fine to stay as prosecutor on this case. More information came out that made me uncomfortable with it. So when that, you know, as we got ready for trial, this witness information came out that the person that I'd represented in Mr. Yan's office, I think that it got too uncomfortable for me to do. So I kind of recused myself. I told my office, I just won't do it. So the judge had already decided I was not going to be recused. Information came out after the fact. I think this is why it's, it was also a murder case, so it was very high-profile. But I'm the one that I think told my office, I'm not willing to go forward.
Well, sometimes the media doesn't always follow through with the end result. They just look at something that looks exciting and put it out there, but they never, you know, the end of the road of what really happened. And it's unfortunate when the media does that because people have their own assumption when the reality is really toward the end. So I appreciate you explaining that to me. It must be really an honor to be able to be, I mean, to be here today and voted in by your peers. That's one of the greatest things, but to have people come and testify on your behalf, of course, it's, you know, it's heartfelt and warming. So if anything, that's a testament to the work you've done here and what you've contributed and what you sacrificed, you know, to get where you are today. So I greatly appreciate that. You've done a lot of criminal cases, so I know as a magistrate, maybe I'm wrong, I'm not an attorney, but as magistrate judge, not only do you hear criminal cases, but also civil cases as well?
Yes, I'll be handling small claims, traffic court, restitution court, potentially, you know, if other judges are occupied, I'll fill in there as well. So I'll be handling civil cases.
So civil cases. And what is your experience? Because it's obvious, you know, everyone talks about your criminal cases that you've been working on. What is your experience on civil cases?
So oddly enough, when I first started being a prosecutor, the prosecutors are the ones that cover traffic court. Restitution court actually stems from criminal cases in 80% of the time. So I've handled restitution cases, I've handled traffic court. The one thing I didn't handle too much of in my career is small claims, civil cases. But I did do that when I was in Mr. Yan's office. I did a civil trial. We negotiated civil cases. I brought forth civil claims. So I actually got a very, you know, it was just a six-month opportunity, but I got a very quick breadth of that experience. I also clerked, sorry, for Judge Perez for two years, almost two years. And he actually had a civil docket, and I actually got to work in a lot of civil cases. So it may have been a little bit dated, but I do have sufficient experience, I think, to carry out. And whatever I don't know, I will figure it out. I will talk to Judge Kwan, I will talk to the judges, I'll make sure that whatever comes in front of me, I'm prepared, I'll do the research.
Thank you. That was my next question. How are you going to continue education with regards to that? You know, in areas that you're, you not practice on, like you have with the criminal cases. So I appreciate you mentioning that, and pretty sure there is a requirement that keeps an ongoing education on what the latest thing is. Definitely in technology on how to, you know, that's moving forward, so I appreciate that. You know, everyone talks that you're like a nice guy and, you know, you're trying to be fair, which is so important. But do you also consider yourself as a tough individual?
So I think if you talk to some of the defense attorneys in some of these bigger cases, they'd probably say he's, in court, one of the toughest attorneys that we have on Guam. You know, when it comes to trial, once we're there, I don't, you know, when the time comes, I will be tough. I'll be stern, I'll be strict. As a judge, I'll make the right decision. There'll be times where I'll be compassionate, but I will always be fair, no matter what the situation is, and if someone needs to be held prior to trial, they'll be held prior to trial. I'm not worried about making that decision.
That's good to hear because it sounds like you have such a big heart, you know, and everybody talking about you that, you know, we're also want to ensure that the safety and well-being of the public is at hand and you have the ability to allow a person to go back on the street, you know, especially when they come up to you for any arraignment or anything. And it's not just the safety of the community, but also the safety of the individual themselves. So I hope that when time comes, you become that tough individual, keeping your heart intact. Because, you know, it's ironic, I was talking to Senator Brown, because you look just like my son, but you're a little shorter. Yeah, you are a little shorter. My son is 6'8", bald-headed like you. He was born with red hair. It turned brown, the tremors started coming in a little bit, you know, but... And with the beard and everything, you look just like my son. And I was looking at you, but it wasn't until you started talking about your wife's grandmother and how she took care of you, and I could see it in your heart, how much you really loved her. I mean, she really took care of you, and I'm sorry for your loss too. I know tonight, it was so mystical that this happened tonight, you know, all nights. And it is saying that, and I was really holding back my tears and I didn't want to cry, but... I think you're going to be a very good magistrate judge. I've never met you before. I had to ask, you know, the speaker, and that's why I went and took the time to read your documents. But I think, you know, just tonight alone, just that feeling. I wish you the very best, and it's very rare that I give my, you know, let my support to anyone before we get on the floor, but tonight, I'm giving mine. And I want to thank not only you, but I want to thank your wife for allowing you or the decision made between the two of you to serve in this capacity because it's going to be just as hard. But mostly, I want to thank your in-laws because they'll probably be doing a lot of the babysitting while you're working. And thank your in-laws for allowing you to do this, and your family too, if they're here or in the States. So once again, good luck to you. My office is always open if there's anything we can do or if you come across any legislation that needs to be done. I'm very anxious to hear it.
Thank you.
Thank you and good luck.
This is Masih. Senator Taitye. Senator Lohan.
Thank you, Ben, Chair. Good evening, Attorney Brown.
Good evening.
And congratulations on your nomination.
Thank you.
I'm not saddened that you're leaving the Attorney General's Office, and the reason why, or the reason why is we watch people who have these big dreams and dream of, and dreamt of being a judge. And you're very close to fulfilling that dream, and that dream is just right around the corner. So that being said, nothing against the Attorney General's Office, but the pursuit of a dream and the fulfillment of a dream is what makes me really happy to see that because it's, Attorney Brown, it's just around the corner. That being said, we heard the, of course, testimony tonight on your judicial temperament. There was previous questions asked in regards to what will you do, you know, the catch and release and all that. I think we want to better understand, maybe if you can describe to me and the panel here, what you perceive will be your judicial philosophy.
So I think it's going to have to develop over time a little bit. You know, I don't want to go on my first day with a plan and say, I'm just going to do this every time. Every time, every day that I go to court, I'm going to develop that a little bit, that, you know, my, I guess, my approach to everything. But I do have a lot of experience in the types of cases where victims are hurt again or members in the community are hurt again. And I think I'll, I think that knowledge of what the likelihood of this person committing a new crime is, there's not many people, maybe Mr. Norio might be better suited than me, but I have a good idea when someone's going to come back to us. So my job will be to make sure that doesn't happen. Or if it does happen, is to react quickly. And I don't know exactly what my plan's going to be, but I'm, you know, I plan on developing it over time. But I will start with, is this person going to hurt anybody? Is this person going to go back to the victim? Is the victim going to speak up if he does? That's an important part. And I think I have an understanding of what likelihood there is for that, and I'll be able to use that knowledge to best predict when it's going to happen. So I, you know, I expect, under me, there's not going to be a catch and release. I mean, there will be, of course, but it'll be... I mean, there will be, of course, but it'll be as low as it possibly can.
Yeah. You know, my previous stint as the legislature, we had a couple of judges come before us as well. I think never a magistrate judge, but Supreme Court and Superior Court. One of the questions that we asked, and to get a sense of their judicial philosophy basically is where they, you know, to understand, to understand, and so when decisions are made, we understand basically where they're coming from. And in regards to judicial philosophy, you want to ask if you're more of a maybe judicial activism, judicial restraint?
I guess it's kind of hard to tell until I get in there, but I expect to be more in the conservative side.
More of the conservative side?
Yeah, you know, I mean, if we need to make laws happen to keep the island safe, we'll do that. You know, if we need to decide if a law is unfair or not, I'm sure that'll be a part of the decision-making. But I, you know, I plan on keeping the island safe above all else. And if somebody is a threat, I'm not going to let them out, that's for sure.
Yeah. I mean, again, the island is unique, you know, most, it used to be everybody knew everybody. It's not that way nowadays, but it's still a small island and we still know a lot of people. And as was mentioned previously, we know a lot of people, a lot of family, you know, ties and things like that. I'm glad that, we've heard earlier in regards, I think it was Attorney Hattori that had mentioned that being a minister, eucharistic minister, and why wouldn't you want somebody in the jury that's from your village? And so it shows the ethical side, of course, of that. So I believe that you would side on the, more the conservative side of the judiciary. That being said, and you answered this already, but it's great to hear again and have it in record, but given, again, your explanation in regards to your judicial philosophy that you have described and, you know, that's still to be molded as you, you know, see the cases and that come before you and having, of course, reviewed your resume and, of course, knowing that your experience is primarily, of course, in prosecution focus, right? And you answered this question, but I would ask again, can I get you to your commitment that, to impart, again, justice to criminal defendants in a fair and impartial manner?
I am fully committed to upholding the Constitution through the Organic Act. I'm fully committed to making sure that a defendant is heard, that his rights are considered. And I'm fully committed to hearing from both sides before making a decision and evaluating the facts in the individual case before me without just relying on biases or knowledge of what someone might do. It'll be, what are the facts currently before me and I'll make the right decision at the time. And I'm sure that will develop as we go forward, but I plan on, like I said, I will keep the island's safety at the forefront of the conversation while upholding the defendant's rights.
And last question. Will you commit to myself and the panel here today that you will be scrupulous, you will scrupulously adhere to the Fourteenth Amendment, due process requirements when reviewing cases presented to you without fear or favor?
I fully commit to that.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Congratulations. First to congratulate you is that dream, accomplishment of that dream is just right around the corner.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Sisus Masi, Senator Luhon. Senator Perez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And good evening, Attorney Brown.
Good evening.
Congratulations on your nomination. Yeah, a lot of the questions were asked in regards to criminal cases and I thought I heard you say that you were handling 500 cases at one time, is that correct?
Yeah, for a while I was the only person assigned to all the DUIs. There was at least 500 cases at the time. And that included misdemeanors and felonies.
And then you also stated that as a judge, if confirmed that you're going to be moving a lot of cases through. And maybe I'm just wondering, you know, do you see there's some stalling occurring as far as scheduling currently in the courts?
So I would probably say that because of COVID, there's still that lasting impact of things that couldn't have been resolved for about a year. So there's always going to be a time to be able to catch up. So I, you know, I'm not all that familiar with the civil cases yet, but, you know, I think I observed one of the prior public hearings where, I think it was Judge Tolentino said he had 35,000 hearings in a year, something like that, 3,500 hearings in a year. And I can only imagine that's worse now than it was back then, even with two magistrate judges. So I just, I work in high volume, I'm used to it. I'm efficient, you know, I make the right decision hopefully most of the time, but I move quickly. And if a case is old, I'll bring the parties forward and explain to me why this case is still here. Because, you know, we got to get off the docket while still considering what the parties need.
Okay. And so the, I guess the other question is, how do you, you know, do you pace yourself in these situations? Is there, you know, because you might have to deal with burnout as well. So is there a way to kind of balance that?
I'm kind of used to the concept of burnout based on my current job, but I have a beautiful family support. Even if I had to work, you know, when I'm in trial, I work 70, 80-hour work weeks sometimes. So I'm not a stranger to the hard work. I think I have a very comfortable home life that makes things a lot easier for me. And my wife has always been supportive of me. So she'll tell me when she thinks I need a break, if I need to take a day off or whatever else I might need. I'll be well aware to make sure I don't, I guess, abandon my post or anything like that, but still be fair and find a way to, I guess, refresh myself if I need to.
Yeah, that's important, I think, to keep a clear mind. As far as impartiality, how do you make sure that you are going to cultivate that?
Well, I've always been one to consider how things appear. You know, as a prosecutor, you can't work on cases that you might have a conflict on. So I've always been one to, you know, if I'm worried about something, I'll make sure the defense attorney knows about that and I'll make sure that they say, hey, just so you know, you know, the witness is my wife's third cousin, you know, so you guys make the decision if you want to talk to the judge about it. I might make sure there's always, the parties are aware of it. So to make sure that I keep up that appearance of neutrality, I'll make sure the parties are familiar with everything that's even a close call. Even if it's a distant close call, I'll make sure that the parties know about it so they can make the decision if they want to object to me staying on the case or not. So I will be upfront and forward with any potential biases.
So one of the things I've noticed that you'll be dealing with is a lot of the environmental violations. So littering, for instance, also illegal fishing, that sort of thing. How familiar are you with those laws and are you willing to uphold them? I guess that's a question.
Of course. I'm not 100% familiar with those things, but sometimes prosecutors will get some of these cases if they're attached to other cases. Like, for example, someone's on a bench warrant and they get picked up on illegal fishing, we have to decide if we're going to charge illegal fishing. So I am familiar with that process, how it works. On the civil side, you know, if they're going to forfeit their fishing poles or whatever the equipment is, I do have a familiarity with it and I will uphold the laws, exactly what the court would prefer and what the law requires.
Yeah, one of the recent changes in laws, we increased the fines for illegal dumping. It's phrased as substantial littering. And so originally it was $500, $750, and $1,000 based on the number of offenses. And then we changed it to based on the quantity. So it increased from 1,000 and then 5,000 and 10,000. So are you, what do you think about those type of fines? We're talking about illegal, you know, large quantities.
So, you know, I think the priority is deterrence. Our island is so beautiful. If we have people just dumping everywhere, not only is it a sanitation issue, but it's, you know, it makes, it could hurt tourism. It makes people think twice about where they want to go with their time. So I think harsh fines are more than reasonable. If the effort is to deter and we're not making somebody who has no money pay $10,000 without consideration if can he do this and how can we make him be able to do this without, you know, making him turn to a life of crime? So there's going to be a balance, but I will be able to enforce those and I think that the intent of that is appropriate.
Thank you. I know the speaker asked the question about, is there anything that would affect your ability to adjudicate, I guess, fairly? And do you have any engagement with any kind of activities? Let's say like, you know, as a minister, I know Attorney Hattori really kind of cleared that. But do you foresee any conflicts of interest from your engagement with these, like nonprofits and such?
The only organizations I'm a part of right now, I'm on the Board of Trustees for the Law Library. There's other judges already on that board, so I don't think there's going to be a conflict there because it's kind of legal adjacent, right, Law Library? So I don't think that's going to be a problem. I don't know if I have, you know, I'm not currently a eucharistic minister. And the church I go to is Yumatic right now, so it's a pretty small, the chance of seeing somebody from Yumatic is pretty small, if I think, still there, but I think if I see someone in front of me I'm not comfortable with, the parties will know and I'll know and I will never let any impropriety even show up that's not addressed.
Right. Thank you, Attorney Brown, for answering my questions. I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sisus Masi, Senator Perez. Attorney Brown, can I just ask you, so when you were talking about, I'm very encouraged by your suggestion that there may be a way to do assessments that are more akin to our island versus, I guess, the Ohio assessment that they're using or whatever else they are using as well. And you talked about treatment available on Guam and that, how that impacts the risk assessment or safety to the community assessment. And we had also tried to encourage the judiciary to, in a different way, assess criminal sexual conduct cases by mandating criminal sexual conduct-specific type of assessment for those types of crimes. So, because we knew at the time, well, that was a testimony that we received, that there was no treatment for that here on Guam. So we, and then we were reading in the paper about releases of people who had committed that crime and then re-offended. And so it seemed to me, from my research, that if not treated, there's a very high likelihood of re-offence for criminal sexual conduct. And with Guam not having any treatment, then we had a very high likelihood of re-offence on release. So I'm very encouraged by your suggestion that there is room in these assessments for more ones that are, I think you said, more akin to the island, more specific to the purpose as well. And I hope that you will pursue that with the judiciary in this new role of yours. Because it is very clear that the resources that we have here are impacting our ability to, well, it's just impacting our ability to rehabilitate offenders, maybe as people think that we should be doing, right? And so a very fair assessment of all of those things and how they work together and recommendations to the legislature as well, I'm very open to those. So I really look forward to your involvement in that. And again, I see a lot of people from the Attorney General's office here, some new, some long time, and of course, some of these who have served in the Guam bar on both sides for very long times here in support of your nomination. So very encouraged and very proud as well. So I'm very glad to see that the testimony is consistent pretty much and the review of your record was very clear. So thank you. And if you have anything else to say before we close, otherwise we're going to close this here.
I have nothing to add.
All right. Sisus Masi, and thank you again to your family for being here and my condolences to the family. But thank you all for being here. Your presence really means a lot and says a lot. And all of those who testified, I really appreciate the different perspectives from your testimony. I thought we really got a good perspective from the different aspects that you decided to focus on. So thank you very much. And thank you again and congratulations, Attorney Sean Brown. Sisus Masi. We'll now conclude this hearing. It is 7:38 PM. Sisus Masi Torres.